Monday, September 25th, meeting of the Common Council. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the might of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, we'll have the roll call.
Alder Person Diaz.
Here.
Alder Person Doyle.
Here.
Alder Person Gaskell.
Here.
Alder Person Linder.
Here.
Alder Person McGilvery.
Here.
Alder Person Steiner, or Touche.
Present.
Alder Person Steiner.
Here.
Thank you. Next, we have Agenda Item Number Four, Public Comment. If there's anyone from the public who wishes to speak at this time, please come up to the podium and sign in. Anyone wishing to speak at this time? Seeing none, we'll move on to Agenda Item Number Five, Approval of Minutes from the September 11th, 2017 Common Council Meeting. Is there a motion to approve? Okay, we have a motion by Alder McGilvery. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Diaz. Any addition or corrections to the minutes? All those in approval of the minutes, please signify by saying aye.
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 And that passes. Seeing as the mayor is absent, we have no mayor's business for this evening. Next, we have the Administrator's Report. Mr. McCorskey.
Thank you. I have one item. I wanted to remind council that the Madison Area MPO will be meeting their, for their monthly meeting here in Verona at the City Hall on October 4th at 6:30. It provides an opportunity to interact with the Madison Area MPO.
Thank you for that update. Next, we have Agenda Item Number Eight, Engineers' Report. Mr. Montpass.
Thank you. Just a couple of quick updates. The 2017 Street Rehab Project is complete. The Maple Road Pond Project is complete, and the Lincoln Street Channel Project, the construction's done. We're working on punch list items and closeout.
Thank you. Any questions or comments regarding the Engineers' Report? Next, we have Agenda Item Number Nine, Committee Reports. 9A. We'll start with the Finance Committee. Alder McGilvery.
Thank you, Madam President. Under Item 9A1, I'll make a motion to approve payment of the monthly bills in the amount of $720,614.48.
We have a motion by Alder McGilvery. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Linder.
Way of explanation on the three of the larger items from this month's bills. First being Drax Inc. for the Lincoln Street Channel, Phase Two, that amount $195,015.53. The second being to Ewald Automotive Group for Police Vehicle, that's $54,016. And finally, to Raymond P. Cattill for the 2017 Street Rehab Program, $260,026.54.
Thank you. You've heard the explanation of the bills. Are there any questions for the Finance Committee? Seeing none, all those in favor of approval of the bills, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? And that motion passes unanimously. Alder McGilvery?
Thank you. Under Item 9A2, I'll make a motion to approve a facade improvement grant agreement with Plumbing and Glass Services, Inc. at 221 South Main Street.
We have a motion by Alder McGilvery. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Linder.
The proposed facade agreement would provide tax increment financing funds to make improvements to the 221 South Main Street building and improve the appearance of the downtown of Verona. Improvements include power washing the building, painting the whole building, and add the appearance of windows on the upper floor of the building. Property owners will install a new awning on the front of the building. At the committee level, we had discussion about approaching or authorizing staff to approach the current owners of the building and see if they might be interested in perhaps expanding the restoration process beyond what the limited proposal there was. We authorized, at the committee level, we authorized them to do that. The current amount, I would need help with because I can't find the number, I think it was $16,580?
Yes.
Does that sound right? That amount would come out of the existing TIF four funds that are left. Currently, city staff's working on defining what amount is left after the street rehabilitation program. So, there is some question about how much funds it would actually be available for this grant. And again, we'd have to talk with the current building owners to see if that's something they'd be interested in pursuing more. My personal belief is, in talking to Mr. Steiner, that building's been around for quite a while. Probably one of the older buildings, if not the oldest building that's left downtown. I'd like to see us find a way to help them improve the site of the building, and if we can find a way to extend the life of the building and make the downtown look great, I think it's a worthwhile project.
Alder Linder?
We believe we talked about it not to exceed the $16,580 for staff to kind of work with initially.
Any additional questions or comments? Alder Diaz?
Question for staff or whoever might know the answer. How old is that building? I tried to look it up actually yesterday, and I couldn't figure out when it was built. Does anyone know?
I think.
1922.
Yeah.
We've got some paperwork. It says 1922.
Yeah, the Old Blacksmith was at 1922.
Then it was a bead and seed before it became Plumbing and Glass.
Alder Gaskell?
Assuming funds are approved, are they available immediately? And have they indicated if they're planning on doing this this season or next spring?
It sounded like they wanted to try and get it done as soon as possible before the winter, ideally. Any more questions or comments? All right. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? And that motion passes unanimously. Any further business from the Finance Committee?
No, thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Agenda Item 9B, Planning Commission. First item, 9B1, let's see. We have discussion and possible action regarding Resolution Number R-17-048, approving the project plan and establishing the boundaries for the creation of Tax Increment District Number Nine, City of Verona, Wisconsin. Do we have an overview from Mr. McCorskey or Mr. Sayer at this time? Thank you.
This resolution would allow the project plan and boundary creation for Tax Increment District Number Nine located along Verona Avenue. This TIF district can provide public funding for redevelopment projects within that boundary that can create a tax increment. Council would provide TIF fund obligations through separate development agreements as projects occur.
We also have Mr. Taves here tonight, if anyone would like additional information. Alder Linder?
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution Number R-17-048, approving the project plan and establishing the boundaries for the creation of Tax Incremental District Number Nine.
We have a motion by Alder Linder. Is there a second? Second by Alder McGilvery. Any additional questions or comments? Seeing none. Those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Okay. And that motion passes at account of, let's see, one, two, three, five to one. Next, we have Agenda Item 9B2, Discussion and Possible Action Regarding a Public Hearing on Renaming a Portion of North Nine Mound Road. I believe we need a motion to open the hearing. We have a motion by Alder McGilvery. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Linder. All those in favor of opening the public hearing, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? And the public hearing is open. All right. Seeing as we have no public comment right now, a motion to close the hearing would be in order. We have a motion by Alder McGilvery, seconded by Alder Linder. All those in favor of closing the public hearing, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? And the public hearing is closed. Next, we have Agenda Item 9B3, Discussion and Possible Action Regarding Ordinance Number 17-900, renaming a portion of North Nine Mound Road. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion for the sake of discussion, to approve Ordinance Number 17-900, renaming a portion of the North Nine Mound Road.
We have a motion by Alder McGilvery. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Linder. Any questions or comments at this time? We have a...
Maybe, yeah. Mr. Linder, are you gonna?
I'd be happy to read it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The proposed ordinance will rename portions of Nine Mound Road to Northern Lights Road and North Nine Mound Court. The completed Nine Mound Road project has created a new cul-de-sac on the former North Nine Mound Road and reoriented Northern Lights Road. With the completion of the project, the city needs to legally change the names of these roads for public safety purposes. As part of the road name change process, city staff notified all property owners impacted by the change with a certified letter notifying them of the name change. With this change, numerical addresses will not change for these owners, only change North Nine Mound Road to North Nine Mound Court. A public hearing was just, was required before the Common Council, and the Plan Commission approved the ordinance on September 5th by a vote of four to zero for approval.
Thank you for sharing the explanation, Alder Linder. Are there any questions or comments at this time? Alder McGilvery?
Just one question, whether or not, I know with Dane County Emergency Services, sometimes when we change addresses, even if it's something small like this, it doesn't get, it doesn't get pushed forward to them. So, if Mr. Sayer can address that, that'd be great.
As part of this, we'll notify Dane County, our police department, post office, everyone involved. We'll send a letter to them, just notifying them of this change. So, the intention is, obviously, once it's approved, that that will go out and we'll get the signs up and make sure they're accurate. But they will be notified because we have to do that.
Just a follow-up. Is there any jurisdictional change at all? Is it still?
Nope, that was part of that jurisdictional transfer we did.
So, that's still?
Yeah, that's still valid and in place. So, it doesn't, it doesn't change the jurisdiction of the road. It's still our road, from a jurisdictional standpoint.
From an emergency services, though, the reason I ask is because in the past, there's been confusion about Sheriff Department jurisdiction versus Police Department jurisdiction as it relates to Redden Soccer Park. And I'm just wondering if this would have any of the similar problems.
Chief Coffin and I have talked about this road a few times now this past year. So, I believe the Police Department is pretty clear on who has jurisdiction, where his big concern was the intersection of Northern Lights and County Highway PD. But it's my understanding, just from the police chief, is that that confusion has been clarified.
Thank you.
Any additional questions or comments? Seeing none. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? And that motion passes unanimously. Next, we have Agenda Item 9C1 with Public Safety and Welfare Committee. Alder Touche.
Thank you, Madam President. I'm making a motion to approve a special event permit application for bark, scoot, and boogie on October 7th of 2017 from 3:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. from Samantha Robinson of Shelter From the Storm.
We have a motion by Alder Touche. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Gaskell. Alder Touche?
Samantha's applied for this permit. This is the first year for the fundraising event for Shelter From the Storm Animal Rescue. The event includes games, face painting, pumpkins, caricatures, a photo booth, horseback riding, food court, and a beer tent. A drawing of the event area is included with the application, which is just over the hill here. In addition to this event, the next motion is for a Class B beer license for this. At committee level, we approve the permit.
Thank you for the explanation. Are there any questions or comments for the committee? Seeing none. All those in favor of approval of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? And that motion passes unanimously. Alder Touche?
Item C2, same applicant, making a motion to prove a temporary application for, proven application for a temporary Class B slash Class B retailer's license from the Shelter From the Storm for Bark, Scoot, and Boogie on October 7th of this year from 3:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. at Festival Park, contingent upon the applicant securing a license distributor.
We have a motion by Alder Touche. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Gaskell.
Same description. This is just the license portion of it.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? And that motion passes unanimously. Alder Touche?
Next item, 9C3. I'll make a motion to approve an application for a Class B beer and Class C wine license from 48 Taps LLC doing business as Mr. Brew's Tap House at 611 Hometown Circle Number 104 in Verona, Wisconsin. Derek Dineen as agent.
We have a motion by Alder Touche. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Gaskell.
Mr. Dineen is taking over Mr. Brew's Tap House from the corporation. He's purchasing, purchasing the business from Mr. Brew's. Alcohol will continue as it has been in the past, with alcohol served in the bar, dining area, and patio. Contingent license will be, the license will be contingent upon the surrender of the current alcohol license by Mr. Brew's Tap House and proof of ownership of the presence of the premises by Mr. Dineen. The committee recommended approval.
Thank you for the explanation. Any questions or comments? Seeing none. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? And that motion passes unanimously.
Item 9C4. I'm making a motion to approve an application for Class B beer and Class C wine license from Garlic Mouth LLC doing businesses as Jordano Cookhouse at 600 West Verona Avenue, Suites 5 and 6 in Verona. Louis Lettenmeyer, Jr. as agent.
We have a motion by Alder Touche. Is there a second? Second, second by Alder Gaskell.
Louis Lettenmeyer is taking over Jordano Cookhouse at 600 West Verona Avenue. Mr. Lettenmeyer has worked for Jord... For, I'm pronouncing his name terribly.
We're gonna make you spell it afterwards, too.
I hope so. For the cookhouse, for the last several years, beginning in October 1st of this year. Who will be leasing the premises from, to Jordano? Oh, man, you guys are killing me here. Help me, somebody. The existing owner is perfect. And continuing the restaurant business. Alcohol service will continue as it has in the past, with alcohol sold in the front counter and consumed in the dining area. Because the application was received late, approval will be for a provisional Class B beer and Class C wine license for a period beginning on October 1st and ending at the end of October. Approval of these licenses will also be contingent upon surrender of the current alcohol licenses by the current owners and proof of management of the premises by Mr. Lettenmeyer. The license application will be considered again on October 23rd of this year at the committee level.
Thank you for the explanation. Any questions or comments for the committee? Seeing none. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? And that motion passes unanimously. Next, we have Agenda Item 9D, Public Works Sewer and Water Committee. Alder Touche?
Thank you, Madam President. I'm making a motion to approve Change Order Number Two and Project Closeout for Project ID 2015-104, the Downtown Streetscape Stage One.
We have a motion by Alder Touche. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Diaz.
JP Collin has completed the project, 2015-104 Downtown Streetscape Project Stage One. Change Order Number Two is to rectify as-built quantities as required for field conditions and the close of the contract. The contract awarded had an original value of $562,332 back in March of this year. Change Order Number One was an administrative date change on the contract. The final contract value, after validating as-built quantities, is $551,262.30. This is a decrease in $11,069.70. The Public Works Committee reviews and recommended approval at committee level.
Thank you for the explanation. Any questions or comments? Seeing none. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? And that motion passes unanimously. Alder Touche?
Item Number Two, I'll make a motion to approve the relocation order for Transportation Project Platte 5796-10-00, Old PB Bridge, contingent upon Design Study Report Approval.
We have a motion by Alder Touche. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Diaz.
The city's working with Wisconsin Department of Transportation Local Bridge Program to replace the roadway bridges along Old PB. In addition, certain federal funding will be used for this project. The project requires the city to acquire property and property interests from adjacent landowners to expand and improve the roadway. The relocation order before the, before us today approves the overall transportation project platte, which is attached, and allows the city staff to work with, work on acquisition of all properties within the Verona project limits. Relocation also confirms two important statutory steps. Access to the city's relocation order for the project confirms that the project is necessary and for a public purpose. The property to be acquired is from Dane County and the City of Verona. Please note that the City of Verona does not have condemnation power over governmental agencies. In the near future, city staff will be providing documentation, documents to the Public Works Committee and council to continue the acquisition process. Therefore, this is not our typical relocation order form.
Thank you for the explanation. Are there any questions or comments? Since we have Darren here tonight, I was wondering if you wouldn't mind speaking to maintaining access to the community garden during, during this process next summer, or what that looks like at this time?
Thank you. Last week, I had a meeting with the DOT, which is the consulting manager for the project through the West Dot Local Bridge Programs. Dane County Parks, Town of Verona, myself. And the pedestrian bridge has evolved to provide access to the county gardens. But in short, the county and I have came to terms, and there will be a memorandum of understanding that we'll be putting a pedestrian bridge in to provide access to the county gardens. That'll be a permanent structure that will be installed before the county guard, before the bridges are removed for the roadway project. So, there will be another motion coming forth with the agreement with the county in the future to get that approved. That'll establish maintenance, funding, ownership, timing. Who's providing what services to get the bridge from where we are today to getting it constructed.
Thank you. Any additional questions or comments? Alder Linder?
Thank you. I remember talking about this, and if I remember right, I owes a lot of money for that pedestrian bridge.
The cost has gone significantly down.
Well, that's good.
So, the county has provided a note of $20,000 that they will support towards the project. And one of the preliminary estimates that was given to us was a total cost of $55,000 on a estimate for installing the bridge per DNR's pedestrian design guidelines. So, the cost differences between what occurred before to what the county has provided was a difference of Ash Toes requirements, which dictates transportation and pedestrian guidelines that we follow within our public right of ways. Those design guidelines are more stringent. So, the guidelines that the DNR has are less stringent, basically decreasing the cost significantly for the products.
So, is this bridge necessary once the PB is, excuse me, this pedestrian bridge necessary once the road is, bridge is reconstructed?
It will be for long-term pedestrian plans if we want to hang and put a bike path on the west side of Old PB in the near future.
Is that in the plans?
It is not in the, it was not identified in the pet and bike plan to put a path on that side, but it's been discussed at the Public Works Committee level. The, this pedestrian bridge is required to be put in under the road project based on the guidelines mandated by Federal Highway and the DOT because the county gardens is identified as a 4F property, which has specific permitting requirements. And basically, for us to do the project, they have to sign off on certain aspects, which is one, access. And they want ADA compliant pedestrian access from the park and ride.
So, you were telling, before this pedestrian bridge, you, they were gonna walk around the pass, that that's just not an option? Is that according to the federal government, or?
That, that was okay in their guidelines, but it did not meet the requirements of the county to provide access. It was too far of a walk. Because one option was even, could we use the parking lot at the Ball Diamonds? Up by the cross fields and baseball fields, and that, that wasn't sufficient either. There'd have to be improvements to that other footbridge, too, and then the walkway on the south side of the Badger Mill Creek. So, this process has significantly evolved and has came up with multiple different constraints and different entities providing input and roadblocks. So, it not, it has not been an easy task trying to get this orchestrated and organized.
Okay, I'm just trying to follow the trail here. So, went from a walk path that you had to walk a significant distance around to the county saying, no, we need a bridge here. We'll help, we'll change the requirements of the bridge, which brought the cost down, and they're gonna kick in $20,000.
Well, actually, it was us that backed down on the requirements. It wasn't the county, but.
They're gonna kick in $20,000 of a roughly $50,000 project that they're requiring us to do, which in the future may or may not be required for a bike path.
Correct. Evan, can I, you go ahead, or you want?
Well, I mean, so, we'll be spending the difference on the city's behalf. And the advantage of doing this is, allows us to do both bridges at the same time. If we choose to do one bridge, let's say, at the beginning of the summer, and the second bridge at the other half of the summer, the increased costs, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Jacobson, is about $70,000 if we were to split the project into two. So, in this situation, we have to spend some to save some.
So, without this bridge, you couldn't do both, without the pedestrian bridge, you couldn't do both bridges at the same time?
We would have to provide access to the gardens, which would, we'd need to provide access on one side or the other. So, we'd have to stage the bridges accordingly, build one the first half of the season, build the second one the second half, or do them in completely separate years.
Okay, that makes complete sense. I think you buried the lead on that one there. I don't know, I think I didn't ask right a question. Thanks.
Any other questions?
Alder Gaskell?
Darren, what's the design width of the bridge right now?
The bed bridge?
Yeah.
It'll be 12 feet.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Any additional questions or comments? Alder Diaz?
Thank you. This is just a comment on, I guess, on future plans. I know, I know this is kind of being backed into it by the county, but... Thank you. This is just a comment on, I guess, on future plans. I know, I know this is kind of being backed into it by the county, but I think it's an opportunity to potentially put a good, a good bike path onto PB, so we should look at it as an opportunity.
Thank you. Any additional questions or comments? See none. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? And that motion passes unanimously. Alder Touche?
Item three is same description, different plat number. So I'm making a motion to approve the relocation order for Transportation Project Platte number fifty-seven ninety-six dash zero zero dash zero three, Old PB Bridge contingent upon design study report approval.
We have a motion by Alder Touche. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Diaz.
Just to continue on, it's just really the plat number, it's changed just because we're dealing with different government entities.
Any questions or comments? See none. All those in favor of approval of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? And that motion passes unanimously. Alder Touche?
Item four, discussion, I'll make a motion to approve amendment number two for design and permitting of Old PB roadway bridge with Ayers and Associates.
We have a motion by Alder Touche. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Diaz.
Additional permitting requirements were requested by Federal Highway for the 4F determination. The project limits were encroach on section 4F property and require special permitting amendment. Number two is an increase of two thousand one hundred seventy-seven dollars and fifty-eight cents for a contract total of sixty-six thousand five hundred twenty-eight dollars and twenty-nine cents. Please note, this is a federally funded project with eighty percent federal funds and twenty percent local. Therefore, the actual increase to the city of Verona is four hundred thirty-five dollars and fifty-two cents. At the committee level, we recommended approval.
Thank you for the explanation. Are there any questions or comments? See none. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? And that motion passes unanimously.
Next up, item five, I'm making a motion to approve amendment of the intergovernmental, governmental agreement, or IGA, for the final design of County Highway M and Prairie Hill Road to Cross Country Road.
We have a motion by Alder Touche. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Diaz.
This amendment, IGA, is for additional design services required to complete County Highway M reconstruction project. The design cost is split between Dane County Highway, City of Madison, and City of Verona. The additional cost for the city of Verona is one hundred and one, one hundred one thousand nine hundred sixty-five dollars to bring it to a total of two hundred ninety-two thousand nine hundred sixty-five dollars. Additional services include value engineering analysis to incorporate design components from the VE analysis, storm sewer modifications, construction signage, and utility coordination. At the committee level, we recommended approval. Please note, also, from what I heard from Mr. Jacobson, was the value engineering did save quite a bit on the total project cost, so this was a good investment for the city.
You've heard the explanation. Any questions or comments for the committee? See none. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? And that motion passes unanimously.
Item six, I'm making a motion to approve amendment number one for professional services agreement with MSA for professional land acquisition services regarding Project twenty sixteen dash one-two-three County Highway PD contingent upon our city attorney's approval.
We have a motion by Alder Touche. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Diaz.
This amendment includes the following additional services: prepare relocation plan for affected dwellings for the project, obtain lease of right from six utilities. The amendment costs is seven thousand dollars for new contract value of fifty-two thousand dollars. At committee level, we recommend, recommended approving the amendment.
Thank you for the explanation. Any questions or comments? All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? And that motion passes unanimously.
All right, last item number seven, I'm making a motion to approve land use agreement with Integrity, Grading, and Escavating.
We have a motion by Alder Touche. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Diaz.
Integrity, Grading, and Escavating and the city of Verona have been working on a, in a land use agreement for the use of the city of Verona pit located adjacent to Northern Lights as a disposal site for County Highway M project. At this point, it looks like it's going to be a win-win for all parties, the city, everybody around that's needing this. Staff recommends approval, or committee recommend approval, aye at this time.
Thank you. Mr. Jacobson?
Thank you, Ms. Doyle. We'd like the motion to be contingent on city attorney and staff approval.
Aye, approve.
All right, the motion and second approves. Any additional questions or comments regarding the motion? See none. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? And that motion passes. Any additional business from, where are we, Public Works Sewer and Water Committee?
Seven was enough for us tonight.
Thank you. Next, agenda item number ten, old business. We have discussion and possible action regarding the selection of a city council representative to the Plan Commission. We would entertain nominations at this time.
I would like to nominate Alder Linder, please.
Okay. Any additional nominations? Alder Diaz? We have Alder Linder and Alder Diaz nominated. We need a roll call vote for this.
Alder Diaz?
Diaz.
Alder Doyle?
Diaz.
Alder Gaskell?
Diaz.
Alder Linder?
Linder.
Alder McGilvery?
Linder.
Alder Steiner?
Linder.
Alder, Alder Touche?
Linder.
Neither have garnered the required six votes for this nomination. Any additional nominations or questions or comments at this time? Okay. See none. We'll move on to agenda item number eleven, new business. We have discussion and possible action regarding use agreement between the city of Verona and the Verona Area Community Theater Incorporated for the Verona Dance Program. Mr. McCorsky?
The, this use agreement would allow the Verona Dance Program to use the VACT building, which would include the dance studio bathrooms lobby and throughout the year. And the agreement allows for the conditions for that use. Conditions include the hours, maintenance, indemnification, and insurance conditions. And it's consistent with the lease that we have with VACT for the land. And staff recommends council approve this lease so the dance program can begin their fall semester.
Thank you for the explanation. We would entertain a motion at this time, or questions or comments? Alder Diaz?
I'd like to move approval of the use agreement between the city of Verona and the Verona Area Community Theater in regard to the Verona Dance Program.
We have a motion by Alder Diaz. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder McGilvery. Any questions or comments? See none. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? And that motion passes unanimously. Agenda item number eleven B, we have discussion and possible action regarding use of public funding for redevelopment projects at one nineteen West Verona Avenue and one eighteen South Main Street. We do have a provision to go into closed session for this. Do we have some background information at this time? Mr. McCorsky?
In December of twenty sixteen, there was a request for public funds for this renovation project. There is a new request for investment in public funds on this redevelopment project within the downtown area in the TIF District Number Four located at one nineteen West Verona Avenue and one eighteen South Main Street. And council would allow us to, we are requesting council to provide some direction on the investment of these funds.
Thank you for the explanation. Is there a motion or questions or comments at this time? Alder McGilvery?
Thank you. Just asking legal counsel if there's anything else that could be added to Mr. McCorsky's explanation before we would go on closed session.
There's, as far as I'm aware, there's not, there's not additional background information that would necessarily be appropriate for open session. I guess one of the questions I had is you also have two other agenda items for potentially moving into closed session, and before you move into closed session on any of them, to the extent that you want to have background information provided before you move into closed session, I think you'd want to skip ahead to each one of them, address those, and then potentially circle back and, and as opposed to going into closed session, coming out, going in. And I'm certainly in a position to provide some information regarding the next item, if you want me to.
Yep, that would be fine. So next is eleven C, discussion regarding litigation with parcel sixteen of Transportation Project Platte five-nine-nine-two dash zero-nine dash eight-one.
So city staff has been before the common council on a number of occasions relating to acquisition of property for the County M, County Highway PD intersection project. One of the property owners, the property owner who is at the corner, filed a complaint in Dane County Circuit Court. At this point, they are not challenging the amount of compensation that was provided to, by the city to the property owner. They have made allegations that the city, in fact, does not have the right to acquire the property, which is a, they have the ability to make that claim. We vehemently deny the allegations and the complaint. I can't stress that strong enough. And, you know, the purpose for moving into closed session is to not only provide, you know, update from the city attorney, but also to discuss, you know, to what extent is there, are there potential resolutions that we might be able to reach with them? Not, and because I think that experience would dictate that if an entity is filing this complaint, the right to take action, we can expect that they will also be filing litigation in the future on the amount of the compensation. And so there's, there's the litigation that is at hand right now, and there are other factors for the city to take into consideration as it moves forward.
Alder Diaz?
Since it was filed in court, can you go over the allegations?
Sure. It's, it's a short complaint. The allegations are essentially twofold. Within the condemnation statutes, every municipality, if it's going to acquire property, has a right, an obligation to negotiate with the property owners. They are, the property owners are alleging that the city did not engage in meaningful negotiations. I'm confident that the record will demonstrate that that exact opposite is true, but that is the allegation. The other allegation is that they're claiming that the property that is remaining after the acquisition is an uneconomic remnant, which again, we would dispute.
Which corner is it, please?
Southwest. There's farm, it's being farmed. There is also a residence there, and there's also some rental units. The homes are not impacted by this project, at least from our standpoint.
Any additional questions or comments regarding this item in open session? Okay, then we'll move on to agenda item number eleven D, discussion and possible action regarding costs associated with public roads and public rights of way in partnership with the Verona Area School District regarding the development of the new high school. Mr. McCorsky?
Public roads and right-of-ways have been identified and have gone through one process through the Public Works Committee. As we move forward with working with the Verona Area School District on property along West Verona Avenue in conjunction with the new high school, there's a request for potential public funding, and council would need to deliberate and negotiate the use of public funds related to the proposed project.
Thank you. Any questions or comments or motions at this time? Alder Diaz?
I'm sorry, are these going to be separate motions, or, because I, I'm going to vote differently. I would like to vote differently.
I think we need, yeah.
Okay.
We need a separate motion for each to go into closed session. Any motions or comments?
Okay.
You guys going to rock, paper, scissors?
No, that's fine. I'd like to get the ball rolling here, so under item eleven B, I will make a motion to go into closed session. The common council, the, the item eleven B is the use of public funding for redevelopment projects at one nineteen West Verona Avenue and one eighteen South Main Street. The common council may convene in closed session as authorized by Wisconsin statute one nine dot eight-five parent one parent E for the purpose of deliberating and negotiating the purchase of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons deem a closed session necessary. The common council may reconvene in open session to discuss and take action on the subject matter discussed in the closed session. Excuse me.
We have a motion by Alder McGilvery. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Linder. We'll have a roll call vote for this motion.
Alder Diaz?
Aye.
Alder Doyle?
Aye.
Alder Gaskell?
Aye.
Alder Linder?
Aye.
Alder McGilvery?
Aye.
Alder Steiner?
Aye.
Alder Touche?
Aye.
And that motion passes. Do we have an additional motion?
Under item eleven C, which is the litigation with parcel sixteen of Transportation Project Platte five-nine-nine-two dash zero-nine dash eight-one, I will make a motion for the common council to go into closed session. The common council may convene in closed session as authorized by Wisconsin statute one nine dot eight-five parent one parent E for the purpose of deliberating and negotiating the purchase of public properties, the investment of public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons deem a closed session necessary. The common council may reconvene in open session to discuss and take action on the subject matter discussed in the closed session.
We have a motion by Alder McGilvery. Is there a second?
Second.
By Alder Diaz? Linder?
Sorry.
Sure. Then the roll call vote, please.
Alder Diaz?
Aye.
Alder Doyle?
Aye.
Alder Gaskell?
Aye.
Alder Linder?
Aye.
Alder McGilvery?
Aye.
Alder Steiner?
Aye.
Alder Touche?
Aye.
And that motion passes.
For the trifecta, I will, under item eleven D, which is the costs associated with public roads and public rights of way in partnership with the Verona Area School District regarding the development of the new high school, make a motion for the common council to go into closed session, and I want, for the last time, I should have it memorized by now. The common council may convene in closed session as authorized by Wisconsin statute one nine dot eight-five parent one parent E for the purpose of deliberating or negotiating the purchase of the public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons deem a closed session necessary. The common council may reconvene in open session to discuss and take action on the subject matter discussed in closed session.
We have a motion by Alder McGilvery. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Linder. Roll call vote, please.
Alder Doyle?
Aye.
Alder Gaskell?
Aye.
Alder Linder?
Aye.
Alder McGilvery?
Aye.
Alder Steiner?
Aye.
Alder Touche?
Aye.
And that motion passes. We will now convene in closed session. [END OF TRANSCRIPT]